Open the July 8th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members.
Sarah Williams Blackstone.
Karen Vernon Millville.
Jane Reggio Millville.
Tara Larkin Millville.
Tammy Lemieux Blackstone.
Matt Ehrenworth Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
Thank you and welcome. A public forum. Natasha, do you have anything you'd like to say? Welcome, welcome officially now, welcome. Does everybody remember Natasha? Right, well, welcome and we look forward to working with you. Consent Agenda A, we're going to hold on the minutes from past meetings. Says we have different people who were at different meetings and won't have enough of a quorum for them. So we will, I will entertain a motion just to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Tara, seconded by Tammy. All those in favor of approving the warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. School committee calendar. If you look in your packet, if we keep the same meeting schedule that we had this past year, those would be our meeting dates, but we had a request to move to Thursdays.
Yes, please.
Does that?
Otherwise you'd be missing a few, huh?
No, I have to change my theater tickets like I did this year.
Does anybody have an issue with moving to Thursdays? So everything would just shift one day. And I think it can in all instances.
Am I looking at the wrong one? It's all Wednesdays.
Yeah, no, no, we're going to shift.
But we're going to.
If we, if we.
I don't see Thursday highlighted.
Okay, so everything will just shift one day.
Except July will stay where it is.
Except July will stay where it is.
That would be wonderful for me. Are we moving the green, we're moving the green days also?
Green as well.
Okay.
Is that?
That is fantastic for me, yes.
Alright, so.
Make a motion to accept the calendar by moving dates to the Thursdays.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Alright, so we will meet on the second, generally, the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month.
Thursdays.
Thursdays, Tuesday, now we're going to Tuesday. Thursdays of every month, there'll be no second Thursday meeting in November or December. And the July meeting will be Monday, July 6th. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent.
Great, thank you, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, everybody. The first item on our agenda for this evening is, in your packet, it is titled Secondary Science Material. As you know, at the last, oh, actually, it was the first meeting in June, we had some discussion about needing a little more time for the elementary schools to all pilot a science unit in September and then meet during the October PD Day to put together all the kind of final pieces to what they need and then put the orders for the additional science labs and kits shortly thereafter and then launch the new units on the beginning of trimester two. However, we did share that the secondary units are much more further along, if you will, and we're ready to, ready to get moving right at the beginning of the year. So we shared that at that time that we would come forward to you with a recommendation for resources that we need to launch the new units and you'll see some other materials on here, which we'll talk about in a minute, to launch better, to be frank, some of the existing science units that we have. And so in front of you this evening, you have a very brief outline, and I have for anybody who is curious or has follow-up questions, I do have all of the backup materials that's behind these numbers. I just didn't want to create huge packets of, you know, how many, you know, kaleidoscopes or whatever it is we're going to need, oscilloscopes?
Oscilloscope, you got it.
Jane's very excited right now.
I am very excited right now.
But I do have the backup for the, for the questions that you might have. And so I just, just briefly, I want to share what is behind these. So at the middle school level, you will see that we are requesting $906,029.69 and lab kits and materials, and that's specifically to embed robotics into the coursework. You will see that underneath that we are asking for $16,500 in technology. That does say laptops, and some of us might be scratching our head saying, wait a minute, we're one-to-one at the middle school. Yes, that is true. We have Chromebooks. The Chromebooks have no hard drives. And so for us to actually implement, in particular at eighth grade, the materials that we need for the robotics work, the Lego kits, we actually need laptops with hard drives where we can store the software and the data that we need to. There's just no way to do it with the Chromebooks.
And it has to be laptops versus what's already in this room because it has to be able to move with the things?
Yes, yeah. The idea is that we'll have these mobile, like kits and carts.
Sure.
To be able to bring to the classrooms. And so that will account for 30, which the price we got for those were, it was estimated at $5.50, and actually, Ms. Ehrenworth, you do a really nice job of typically driving those numbers down, so we might even be able to get that a little bit lower.
Ooh, pressure's on.
Pressure's on.
Pressure's on.
But that would actually outfit the rest of what's needed at the middle school. And for the high school, you'll see the ask is, is quite a bit less, it's because they have more or less the bulk of the hardware they need, but they do want to implement the forensics course, the oscilloscope, and for technology, this is their, this is the VR robotics program that we want. Yes, the kits that we want to implement at 6,000.
And so those, they usually get every year, right? It's the new kit that they have to.
Yeah.
Whatever the system is that they each year changes, right?
Exactly. This is the startup, the starter kit to get the program moving. That's right.
And how many laptops does that include, Jason?
Thirty. And so you will see later, when we get to the budget forecast, that Mr. Ehrenworth has encumbered the, just over 37,000 in FY '19 to be able to do this. If you remember, all along, we've been saying that we'll be using FY '19 to hit the science materials, but I did want to bring this before the committee.
Right, so this is for science, not like an elective, not extra courses?
This is part.
This will be a new science course.
Yeah.
Of course, yeah.
Do we have an idea what the elementary supplies are going to run?
Yes, Christina shared at the June meeting, and I'd have to go back at my notes to look at that. I don't recall offhand the exact cost. We also are looking now at the lab kits that go with Mystery Science. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but I, but the Mystery Science program has a pretty robust online component to it, which our teachers have been using. And so right now, we are working with Dr. Remka and Ms. Schaefer to look at the actual lab components, the hands-on piece, to see if it makes sense for us to move in that direction. So I'm just, I'm a little hesitant to say because I don't know yet and I don't want to be too off-base, but I can go back and check.
Does anybody have any questions on this? I'll entertain a motion to approve the secondary science materials.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Karen. Any other discussion?
You said this is from fiscal year, what budget?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yeah, this was our science stuff that we had talked about and we'll buy some science in '20 when we know the elementary, but we'll offset what we had planned to spend in '19.
I'm assuming we know we have this sitting there waiting for this.
Well, if we approve it.
If you approve it.
But, but there's money to pay it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I assumed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Substantious. I'm going to be the first person who uses the oscilloscope.
May I ask a question, Jane?
You may.
On the memo for our warrants and minutes, there's a use of facilities request. Are we going back to that or?
Oh.
It's on the memo itself.
Oh, we will have to go back to that, thank you.
And the letter is here, if anybody needs to see it.
What are we, requesting, a support group requesting the use of the high school library every Wednesday starting in September. Request was submitted to waive the school rental fees.
It's $50, is it $50 a day or?
I think it's per.
Per use.
Yeah, per, per use.
It doesn't say when it goes, how long it goes, is it just the month of September?
Doesn't say it on there.
It just says, I'll be using the LM, the Learning Library Media Center every Wednesday evening. It doesn't even say a time, beginning in September to start a support group.
I can check with Bridget. I know she had a conversation with her. So I can get the details on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only question, I mean, we just need to make sure it, I mean, it's available and. Not bumping something else that's already there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, you know, a student activity came in.
Well, and it's not costing us to.
Trump, you know, come in first.
I mean, we have a custodian on Wednesdays and I'm assuming she's not going to do it at 11 o'clock at night or something.
Right.
So there shouldn't be an additional cost to us, but.
And we typically, if there's a student activity, that will displace those, you know, a group of any sort, we'll get them another place for the evening.
No, it's actually happened here a few times for the gym.
And MEES, they do it too. They always displace if they, like if MASP needs it, they displace whatevers.
I think as long as they, we, you know, they understand that. Somebody want to make a motion to waive their user fee and support the group?
I move to support, to approve the support group with, and waive the rental fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's, you got that, Karen?
That was Sarah.
Sarah, okay.
My voice over to Karen.
So the motion by Tara, seconded by Sarah. Oh, you gotta have it. To approve the support group and waive their rental fee. Any other discussion? Nope. I think I would add with the knowledge that if there's a student activity or school event that needs that space, we would find alternative space for that.
Agree.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm receiving this.
Alright, so now we're back to the advanced placement.
Oh, yes. At the prior meeting, there were some questions about the release of the advanced placement results, so I just wanted to run through those very briefly with everybody. On July 10th, which is this Wednesday, the instructional planning reports will be released to the principals of all the, of all of the schools, the high schools, that had students participating in the, in the advanced placement exams. On July 22nd, all of the student files will be released. It just essentially is a different level of information to the schools. On October, I'm sorry, on August 19th, the student reports will be sent home, so the school committee can anticipate a report, my sense is sometime around that August 28th. I know last year, we did the AP presentation to the school committee at our August 16th meeting, so it will either be August 14th or August 28th at a workshop at some point. In August, we will have a public presentation. The reason for my hesitation on that is I just want to make sure that the results aren't embargoed or anything. We have to make sure that there's like a full public release before we can present the advanced placement scores to everybody.
And they only come out July 10th?
Yes, there was a preliminary, preliminary report that went out on the 5th.
To some families?
But the, to the principals, but the instructional reports.
And to teachers.
That are more detailed, yes, are out on the, are out on the 10th.
Okay. I just know I saw a report to teachers, what their kids in their class received.
Yeah.
Not in Massachusetts, though Rhode Island, so I don't know if it's different, but.
I was going to say, I saw Rhode Island as well.
Yeah.
Rhode Island.
On Wednesday, we'll have the instructional planning reports.
Okay.
That'll be a deeper level of detail on that. So getting there, starting to.
Do we ever acknowledge in any way, like students who score fives?
Didn't last year much, I mean, I know that.
Curious. Be nice. I, maybe we don't have, I don't know, but just curious. Is that pretty impressive?
Yeah, it is impressive.
Yeah, I know that, I know Mike does.
And I think it's just important to, you know, my, my hope for this whole AP thing is to kind of look at the scores and determine whether, you know, a, a high enough percentage are passing with certain instruction and then determine whether that instruction has to change in order to increase that number. So just analyze that a little bit.
Sure. And I know Mr. Dudik does a recognition ceremony with students in the fall for MCAS, and I do believe he also has AP students in there, but it's more intimate, it's him, myself, Mr. Ehrenworth, the students, a couple of teachers, it's more of a small venue, but, but I think it would be great to recognize them publicly as well, for sure. So I just, I know there were some question on that at the last meeting.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Item C, the Learning Forward Summer Institute, that is being held in Boston on July 18th. The Department of Education's Curriculum and Instruction Office has asked me to present, to represent Blackstone Millville Regional Schools at a national conference to discuss how we are utilizing curriculum specifically to help change teaching and learning and outcomes for kids. So I thought that was a really neat thing and we'll be wearing my purple and gold charger gear on the, on the, on the panel, so just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. The item D is the FY '19 Budget Forecast Closeout. And you will see that document in your packet. It is titled with Summary of Major Revenues. And Mr. Ehrenworth is going to walk us through essentially how to look at the document in terms of the revenues, what we have that's still encumbered, and then the preliminary year-end balances. And so with that, Mr. Ehrenworth.
Sure. So if you do look at the top, that top half of the page is the summary of major revenues that we have coming in. And I've outlined, obviously, not all revenues, but the larger ones and what was budgeted originally versus what has actually been taken in. There's an explanation column on the right to give the specifics as to where those variances come from. Of most significant note, the, the three big significant things worth noting are, our transportation reimbursement came in significantly higher than we budgeted. We budgeted about $472,000 and it came in about $555,000. So that's $83,000 over what it was that we were anticipating. Our circuit breaker also came in significantly higher, not as great of an increase, but as you can see, the original net claim that we put in and on the cherry sheet estimates back when we started the budgeting process, or when someone else started the budgeting process, I was not here, it was an estimated reimbursement rate of about 72. It came out to about 71.78 percent, and we have received so far a reimbursement rate of 74.25 percent, which is significantly closer to then, to the goal of the 75 percent, which we are always hoping for. That and the Medicaid income was tremendous this year. We've done a really great job. I have to thank both Jen Hernandez and Jill PG for working with their staff and putting in all of the claims and getting our notes in place and making sure that we're getting together all of the reimbursements that we can ask for. And actually, it says that there was $120,000 budgeted for that, but that was the number that I put in when I initially came in so that we could just watch the revenue and see if it approximated that. But we typically count on only $60,000 coming in to offset the other costs. So even against the $120,000, we brought in $194,000, which is 74,000 above, but really, I think that should be 60-some-odd thousand dollars higher as well, given that we really only plan on offsetting about $60,000 worth of costs. So as you can see, from a revenue perspective, we did significantly well. There were some small variances in school choice and charter school reimbursement. Of worth noting is our school, our school choice sending tuition went down a little bit, but it, but it actually is not because we, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the school choice reimbursement that we got went down a little bit, but we actually didn't, we, we actually sent out less kids, one less child, except the costs for the programs increased. So we ended up losing, we ended up losing money on the reimbursements that we get from the, from the school choice. I'm sorry, that's backwards. The kids that we sent out, we're losing money from. We sent out one less, but we still actually ended up paying more. My apologies.
I understood.
It was a net lo, it was a net loss because actually, as we referenced earlier in the year, TECA and some of the, of the computer-based, home-based programs, their costs increased significantly than what was originally budgeted. That being said, as you can see, we did well with an increase of revenues, which brings us to the lower right portion. As Dr. DeFalco already mentioned, you'll see things that we've encumbered with the FY '19 funds. So these materials or these services have already been encumbered with FY '19 funds. Of particular note are the science curriculum materials there. Another, another thing worth noting is the Wilson language training that we were looking for. We will be able to get 10 teachers trained with that amount. And again, the focus is broken down into curriculum-based, leadership development, and facilities-based, if you look at the right side. So those are encumbered funds from FY '19 that we will be using for those materials. If we move to the left side of the bottom, you'll see the preliminary year-end balance. So far, we've had overencumbrances this year. We had increased salary savings this year from changing in the staff toward the beginning of the year when we had retirements and we replaced them with other new faculty. We did have significant utilities savings, and we had, as mentioned up above, the increased revenue. So if you look at the bottom-left corner, you'll see that our general fund, the total revenue versus total expenses puts us at a negative $123,000, 696. However, all of those other funds that you see below it are the funds that we use typically to offset the costs for the general fund.
Could you repeat that number? Because that doesn't match what I have in my paper.
123,696.
That's not what I have. I have 135,826.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what I have too.
I apologize. I apologize, I had, I was working off my notesheet, which was an older version.
Oh, okay.
I apologize. It is 135,826.
Okay.
And the, the numbers below it are in separate funds, so they have not yet been applied to the general fund to quote-unquote "offset" those costs. But if we add those funds to the general fund in order to offset the expenses, we will end up with a year-end closing balance of approximately $253,000.
And that includes?
This again is an estimate, it's preliminary.
Is that number including the encumbered with?
That is in addition to the funds that are encumbered already.
So we still, we end up with 253,000?
So even after this?
Correct. After that money.
Because they're so close, I thought it was a, a wash.
Yeah, after the money is encumbered for those purchases, which it has been.
I know, but that's.
The 253 will be estimated remaining.
Available for E and D.
So Matt, can you just clarify, the Medicaid actual number in the top section is different than the offset on the bottom?
There was a small, so, yeah, so some of those funds, what you see is, and this is a problem, I shouldn't say a problem, this is a difference between how the budget was run this year versus how I'm hoping to run it next year. This year, as we've repeated, the budget had negative numbers in the expense columns as offsets from these other funds. My, my hope, and it's my intent, to, to actually allocate all of the expenses directly to the fund that they're supposed to come from, from the start. So what you'll see is the revenues from the fund and the expenses from that specific fund, right from the start. What you're seeing, the difference in that Medicaid is, one bill was paid directly out of the Medicaid fund, and the rest of it was just left there to offset with journal entries.
Gotcha.
Expenditures that should be coded to the, to the Medicaid fund. But the, we have an administrative fee for doing our Medicaid paperwork and processing it, and that payment came directly out of the Medicaid fund, so it's a little bit lower than what you, it says the revenue was.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but hopefully next, next year.
That will show it.
What we will see is the revenue that came into each of these funds and the expenses that came out of each of these funds, and there won't be any offsets to the general fund.
I know it's of particular interest to the committee, but the Wilson training has been set up starting August 21st, and we are filling every seat. So I thought that would be good news for the committee to hear. It's the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And you already have the people?
The majority of them. Not everybody yet, but we're very close.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
So we're really excited about that.
Woo-hoo. Any questions?
I have one final concern, and it is a concern. The cafeteria number is a concern to me. I, I know that this committee, prior to my arrival on this committee, put in a policy but that helped kids save face, et cetera, et cetera, and I get all of that, but $39,000 of unpaid lunch fees is crazy.
I will say, actually, that is not, that is not the unpaid lunch, that's not the unpaid lunch fees. That's simply their loss in revenue. That's their loss in revenue over the, the course of the year with respect to their running the food service operations. Because the actual district, the district did reimburse the cafeteria fund for the unpaid lunch fees.
We did that already.
And what was that number?
We did that already. That number was combined this year because when Linnea and I both started at the beginning of this year, it was too late to reimburse for the FY '18 owed monies, and they did cite us for that in our food service audit. They said, just fix it. So this year, we paid for FY '18 and FY '19 funds that were not collected by the students, and it was about 16,000, it was about $16,000 that the district reimbursed the cafeteria fund.
So were we asked for an increase in the lunch rate to try to offset that loss for next year?
We, I think we increased it for this past school year. It's, it gets expensive.
Yeah.
There are definitely.
But if we increased it and they still are $38,000 in the hole.
I just think as a parent, it's getting expensive.
So I can say, I have been speaking with Maureen Gonzalez, our new food service director. She does have a lot of, of plans for changing the way that the, the program is run. One of the things that we are severely undercharging on. is run. One of the things that we are severely undercharging on, and, and still were as of this year, is all of our à la carte items. All of our à la carte and all of our snacks are, we were losing money significantly on them. The other thing, believe it or not, is the catering that the cafeteria service provides for the actual district. So the costs that they pass off to the district when they have to purchase the foods and the pizzas and the sandwiches, or the stuff for the cookouts. So they, they had that up, but they've really not been making any profit on that, or I think they've been taking a loss on some of those larger productions. So that's something that Maureen is looking to, to address as well.
So should we ask, like, wait for her to present something to us, number-wise?
I mean, we have to find a balance. That's, that's a big num, I mean, fortunate, we're in a place where that is not killing us right now. We're not, you know, but that's, that's a, a significant amount. And I mean, my thought was that maybe due to the change of folks, that, that some things got lost in there. But I mean, that was fairly close to the end of the school year that that actually happened, so.
I think, I think that through the course of the summer and the beginning of this upcoming school year, Maureen and I will be doing a lot of work on establishing a budget for the cafeteria and food services. And I, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to having us come and present thoughts on, on that after things are settled. I think that would make sense.
Yeah, we can put them on a future agenda if the committee would like to do that.
I mean, I, for, for me, it's their area. It's just, they have to make some adjustments to make it work. Right. I mean, I, I think they know their business better than we know their business.
Right.
But I mean, with, with respect to the catering, obviously, they don't want to raise their price too much because it's just coming from some other part of the budget for the most part, or you're charging kids to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I told him, it went way high, the catering. We just catered yogurt, just yogurt, and fresh, yogurt and frozen strawberries for 70 people, and it was $400. So they went, they swung that, I mean, they swung really far the other direction in comparison to what MASP has ever paid for that. We were like, when we got that bill, we were like, oh, okay.
Right, yeah.
So.
Okay. But the, the student over, the overcharge was $16,000 for this year?
For two years.
Two years.
For the two years. I will say, the, the majority of it was for this past year. It was almost, it was like $3,000 to $4,000 for 18, and it was almost $12,000 for this year.
I, I thought we took care of that last year. That's why I'm, I'm going to go back and look at my notes, but.
The other thing.
We were concerned about it last year as well. So did we just talk about it and not take care of it? That sounds kind of weird.
I want to, I also want to mention this because it's, it's not clear. This summary of the revenues is something that I know was presented before, so I wanted to also make sure that I, I addressed these. That net loss in the, that net loss in the cafeteria is a loss for this year, but they had fund balances in the cafeteria fund that absorbed that fund itself. So they still have a positive fund in the cafeteria balance. It's, it's not going to.
So we're not having to pay them or balance them?
It, it depends on when they run the E and D, whether it's determined that we have to shift that, just the annual loss, but it, it is possible that that's not even going to come out of our bottom line.
But you're listing it here in case, in case they should.
This isn't maybe, this isn't you, we, we didn't pay this number.
No, we did not pay that. We did pay the $16,000 for the, for the fees.
Yeah.
And is that, Matt, reflected in the general fund? Is that part of that overall general fund account? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In the next item, again, Matt's going to walk us through, but if, just a quick overview. If you remember, during the FY20 budget discussion, we had come forward to the committee with the notion that we would reduce our stipend expenditures by about $50,000. You will see a number in front of you at $20,007.26, which is far less than that. And Matt will kind of walk through what we put forward to the committee to leave unfunded, and a little bit about how we're going to offset the 50 that we had discussed during the budget, because we have some good news with that, too.
So the, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, you can see the positions that we are recommending be reduced from the budget this year. The, they are all non-student-based positions. They are positions that we feel can be covered internally by other positions that, for, for faculty that are working within the district, and it shouldn't impact any type of extracurricular or music or athletic program for any of the students in the district. The total, we had discussed trying to bring this down by $50,000, but prior to us getting to that number, I did go back with our insurance company and find out that we had a number of credits on our MIA account that we hadn't applied. I'm not really sure how or why that happened, but they did, we did have credits that amounted to over $20-some-odd-thousand. So I am applying those credits to our, to our insurance premium this fiscal year, and we made the decision to offset some of those stipended positions that we were going to cut with the additional found rebate in the insurance money.
That way, the music and athletics and the newspaper club and the things that the kids are actually doing don't get touched.
Yeah.
And we will be working with the Office of Learner Support Services and our Assistant Principals and Principals to coordinate these items that are listed here. Because as you can see, at the tune of $20,000, that's significant money, that we can be looking at how to better utilize the supports, the support positions we have in place without adding $20,000 in stipends for that work that should already be done, to be frank, with existing positions. This, we do need action from the school committee, because it is a.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about these? I'll entertain a motion to, what do we say, not fund? What do we?
Sure. To, to withhold funding for these stipended positions.
To withhold funding for the 504 coordinators in all of the schools, for central detention in the high school and middle school, and for the AED coordinator.
So moved.
Tara, second.
And second. Karen, that was you?
Yeah, that was me, sorry.
Moved by Tara, seconded by Karen, to withhold funding for the 504 coordinators in each of the schools, the central detention in the high school and middle school, and the AED coordinator for the FY20 year. Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify what Jason or Matt just said. These roles, the duties performed will still be performed. We're not saying that we're not going to coordinate 504s. It's just going to be done in a different way.
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, this is work. You're absolutely right.
We're not going to not put batteries, we're not going to put, not put batteries in our, our defibrillator.
I'm thinking of the parent of a student who has a 504 saying, "So they're not doing 504s?" And then the rumor mill gets started. So just to clarify.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because, you know, this is work that's done during the school day. I mean, these are typical functions in every single school district that are, that are embedded within existing positions, that there's not $20,000 added to, to do. And I, you know, I do wonder if some of our, you know, student support staff, who, who work very hard, by the way, but if, if, you know, if they're not doing some of these things, it's, it's a little confusing to me, to be really blunt. So with our new Learner Support Services office, we are absolutely taking this on and going to be aligning way tighter, to be frank. And I do want to say, and I do hope parents are listening to this, because I heard a lot of feedback on 504s, in particular, and the process not necessarily being adhered to correctly. We are taking this on, and we are going to get that fixed and in place. And so I do appreciate the feedback from our families, and I would ask them to continue sharing that feedback with their principals, with me, and Ms. Pila Galerani, as the Director of Learner Supports, that we are going to fix this process. And so I'm really glad you said that, Tammy, because that's right. This, this work is not going away, but we're going to do it better.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of withholding funding for the positions mentioned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Matt, can you close my report?
Thank you.
Facilities report. So I did meet with Bruce Duboe of Electric Energy Company prior to school letting out for the year. He has done the designs for the fire, for the fire system at the high school. The plan was to have them start working this week. I've not heard back from him since then. It's been a little bit of a, you know, a hectic time. People are away. I reached out to him today just to try to find out where things stood with regards to the work, and I expect to hear back from him within, within a day or so. But the goal is to actually begin that work within this upcoming week at the latest next week, and they are planning on having it done through the course of the summer. The Millville Boiler, that language, so MSBA sent language that needed to be reviewed by town council in Millville to, that was sent over to them. Their town council reviewed the language and accepted it. We then went back to the MSBA and acknowledged that Millville accepted the language that they would need. We talked about the final cost of what the project would be anticipated to be, and MSBA has since approved us moving forward with the project. They did that at their June meeting. However, the next step in the process is to take that language, get it on to a special town meeting, and have Millville vote on whether or not they want to move forward with the full funding.
And have we asked for that to happen yet, or we haven't done anything?
This, we have not asked for it to be put on a special town meeting yet.
Do you sense that there's an urgency to do that before a November meeting?
Probably, yes. I think Dr. DeFalco and I are at the conference this, upcoming this week. My plan would be to be in touch with Peter and also the select board and see what we can do, starting on the 15th. And the JFK Project is underway, for those of you that were able to make it to the other side of the bridge. The work, the work is, is being done. We've started to have regular project management, owner's project manager meetings. Unfortunately, I have not been able to get to one of them. They were on, the first one was a day that I wasn't here, and the next one is also this week, which we'll be away for. However, the company does provide the updated notes and all of the minutes of each of the meetings, and they forward that out to us.
And you've been in touch with the.
And I've been in touch with the OPM regularly, and I'm well aware of the status, and things are going pretty smoothly as of right now. If, if so, you know, if so desired, I could forward the, the meeting minutes also, include them in my next report if people want me to go through them.
And that's the boiler, the boiler.
Windows.
Windows.
That's the JFK windows and boiler, and boiler.
And boiler, okay.
Windows, doors, and boiler.
And how's the roof situation at the complex? Is that?
It's, yeah, so we haven't heard any updates from Blackstone at this point. They, last we left with them, it was getting repaired. They were just teasing out internally how they wanted to have it repaired.
That's the town of Blackstone?
It's the town. If they wanted to do it through insurance, or if they wanted to go straight to the installer. But we were assured that the roof is being repaired.
By the side of school.
Will be, but it's not being worked on now. That, all that stuff out there is not related to the roof. It's related to the.
No, it's the windows, doors, and boiler.
I did see the fence situation. I was like, oh, they're doing something. I'm not going to remember.
Yeah, that's the window project.
And so are you working with Dan Keys or Dan Keef? Who are you waiting to hear back from?
Uh, Dan Keys.
Keys, thank you.
Anything else? All right, any school committee members have anything they want to add? All right, our next meeting would then be on August 15th at 6, I want to still say 6:00 PM, I assume. 6:00 PM here at the middle school. We, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, not to return to this meeting. We'll adjourn the meeting in executive session.
So moved.
By Tammy.
Second. Then you have to roll call, right?
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Thank you.